Council members, I'd like to welcome you. Thank you to this very special meeting and I don't know if you know Dr. Cook. He's my dentist and he told me early on that we need to keep this meeting clean. And before we start, everybody need to brush and floss. Did I do it right, Doc?
You're not supposed to repeat that.
You told me to do it. Thank you so much for coming. We'd ask you to please stand. And Reverend William will lead us in invitation. Remain standing for our pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Eternal God, who has been our dwelling place in all generations and has compassed our days with blessings. This evening is one of hellos and goodbyes. Changes have been made, but we know that Thou art a God who never changes. Thou art the same yesterday, today, and tomorrow. We ask, oh Lord, that we be granted Your unconditional love and blessings and we ask the same for our departing colleagues and their families. Help those of us who are left to be a team determined to do all that is necessary for the good and benefit of all the citizens of Goldsboro. Help us to continue to rely upon Thy wisdom, strength, and guidance. Bless our city, our state, our nation, and all nations. All this we ask in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna ask our clerk, who's had a real busy day, but I'm sure she's got enough energy to finish this off, to have a roll call for us.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Ms. Breckin Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Henn?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Waller will not be here. His son is here for him and we will get to him later on, but they have in family health problems and we all have that and I'll best go out to them. Minutes of work session and regular meeting of June 18th. Wait for a doctor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, or comment? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, let even know by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Minutes approved. Public comment period. At this time, anyone who would like to take up to three minutes to address us, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anybody? Would you give us your, I know who you are, but for the record, would you give us your name and mail and address?
Andy Anderson, 919-736-3711. At least that's where we do it, used to do it. I want to take just a couple of minutes to come in and say thanks to the board for the things they've done in the past, to do some things to help out with making this county a better place to live, and the cities and the towns around here. I particularly wanted to say so long to the three members that are leaving, but I see one of them's missing, but please pass on that I want to show my respect for you, you three particularly, and say how much I've enjoyed working with all of you in the past and hope we can keep this good relationship going. I think we're all on the same path, trying to get the same things done. And I'm looking forward to working with the new members too and all the rest of the overall board. And if any of you three that are retiring, get tired of playing golf, I'll find you a job.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. If you'd give us your name and mail, and I know you too, but.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to congratulate the outgoing board members and congratulate the incoming board members. But I really want to speak about Ford and Coastment. We have some lands on there, off of Pine Street, and every time we turn around, we try to keep it clean ourselves, but every time you turn around, they, somebody's coming, writing a letter saying you need to cut the grass off the fence. And it's not our fence, but then you can go down from John Street up to M Street and all them rich people down there with all them lots down there, and the grass is two feet high. So why would you make a difference in the little people trying to do the best they can and you ain't doing nothing for them lots down there? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there?
I'm Steve L. Harry, 349 Weaver Road, Goldsboro, NC. I live out in the country and I see you fellows' names in the newspaper all the time and I think y'all are doing a good job. And I'd like to see you improve the town. If there's any way that I could help you with your mobile home parks or your ordinances or anything like that, I'm sure there's people that's got grievances and any way I could help you with anything, I'd like to do so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I came tonight to say congratulations to Mr. Acock and to Mr. Goodman for their election. I'm going to be proud to support them in whatever they need and I just want everybody to know that I haven't laid down and died. I still plan to be out there fighting for people's rights and helping those people who don't have anybody else to turn to. So that's all I wanted to say and thank you. I enjoyed my run for the campaign. I learned a lot. It was, I wouldn't have missed it for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Don't see any signs, so we will move to consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda consists of items B through N. Items B through N, we had moved item F to the action agenda, so it would be B through N minus item F. And then item L, the correct amount of the change order was 169, 540, and 80 cents. 169, 540, and 80 cents.
Very good. We have consent agenda before us?
I make a question. We approve the consent agenda.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Ms. Breckin Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Henn?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Items requiring individual action?
Mayor, we had the one item, item F. And Randy's here, can maybe address that and make sure we understand that item and see if you have any further questions.
Item F is a site and landscaping plan request by the County of Wayne. It's the property on the northeast corner of East Ash Street and Clayborne. The property is, this is Clayborne Street located right here and this is Ash Street located right there. Property is owned general business conditional district and is about three acres in lot area. On April 2nd, 2012, the City Council approved a site plan to allow governmental services on agent activities and associated office uses on this property. At that time, the council approved the use of the buildings, approved a redesign of the parking area, a canopy extension, some driveway closures, a sidewalk to be constructed along Ash Street, as well as some other miscellaneous landscaping on the property. There are currently three buildings located on the property and there are three existing freestanding signs. At the time the site plan was approved, the centermost sign right here was proposed to be removed and replaced with trees and landscaping to meet our landscaping requirements due to the sidewalk construction and the existing asphalt along the frontage of the property. The county has decided that they would like to amend the plan to allow this sign to remain. By allowing this sign to remain, it would become necessary to displace the landscaping as how it was approved upon the original site plan. It was approved by council back in April. They do propose to relocate this landscaping material elsewhere on the site, so the material will be planted, just not pretty much in the front here due to the location of the existing asphalt on the property. The planning commission on their meeting held on July 30th recommend denial of the site and landscaping plan request. They were requesting that a more aesthetically pleasing plan relative to signage and landscaping be submitted. They were specifically looking at maybe a revised sign plan with maybe a smaller, more attractive sign and revised landscaping plan to address the front signage.
Thank you. We have a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion. We deny the planning commission and approve the site plan is shown with what Randy showed it is.
Sir, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, let even know by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Thank you. That's the only item requiring individual action, I suppose?
Yes, sir.
So at this time, we will hear comments from our departing council members and Mr. Waller, Chuck Waller is here, and I think he'd like to say a few words on behalf of his dad, Chuck. Yes, that would be fine.
My mother just got out of the hospital and that's why, I mean, they just got home. But he, first of all, wanted to thank the citizens of Goldsboro for giving him the opportunity to serve and he went on to thank my mom and the kids, his kids, of course, one of them, me and family and friends for their support. He also wanted to be sure to thank those that he asked to serve on the many city commissions and he says, "You provided a great service to your community." He wanted to thank the city staff for the tremendous job they do every day and encouraged them to keep it up. He really enjoyed serving with his fellow council members and felt like we made a lot of progress and wishes nothing but the best for the new folks that are joining the council. He said he challenges the council to continue their progress and that Goldsboro includes city limits on the north, south, and the east and west. Goldsboro includes everyone. And he said, "I tried to serve all of Goldsboro, not just District 2," and challenges everyone else to continue to do that. And lastly, he said he wanted to thank all the people who worked so hard to make Stony Creek Park the jewel that it is for the citizens of Wayne County with the walking track and those that donated the land and put together the disc golf. And he felt like that that contribution was, of the park as a whole, was in excess of $350,000 thanks to the folks that worked on it. He wanted to say a special thank you to Sissy Lee Elmore for her efforts in writing the grant. Wanted to say a thank you to Dr. Rothling for leading the effort to raise the money for the dog park. Wanted to say a thank you to John Casey, the treasurer. A thank you to Riley Wilkins and Miles Perry for raising the money for the disc golf course and also for laying it out. A thank you to Mike Pate for the land and to Charles Norwood for his assistance in the development. And for anybody that we left out, you know, we get to call the names, invariably we'll forget some folks, but wanted to say thank you to everyone, wishes everyone well, and says he's happy to assist any way that he can. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We wish him well. Don?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank council and the mayor for first appointing me back in 2004 to serve as a council member and also the voters of District 3 who allowed me to serve a second term. I'd also like to thank the staff for all their help and support. I still have some of your private cellphone numbers, which I plan to keep. Because I'm not sitting up here, don't think I'm not gonna be calling you, because I will. Also, congratulations to returning council members and also to the new council member elect. Good luck to you and if there's anything I can help you do or the present council mayor do, just give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jackie?
Yeah, I've already been around to probably see all the city employees and thank them that I've worked with over the last 44 years, but I would like to thank the men that sit up here to my left and right and Scott's been here a year and he hit the ground running. I think he's doing an excellent job. But I think that the men that sat up here with me the last eight years, we've accomplished a lot for the city. And we didn't always agree on everything and it didn't always come out 100% of it, but I think we always remain friends and I think we will always remain friends in the future.
We hope.
And with that, I'll say my wife's here and my sister and I'll just say goodnight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment on Bob and Jackie and Don. Just one word comes to mind when I think of you three gentlemen. Class. Class. And it's been just a joy and a pleasure. You guys took me under your wing, shepherded me through this whole process and I am forever grateful. You will be missed, but I know that you will always think of us often. And please tell your dad we love.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to wish Councilman Warwick Chapman and Waller much happiness with their families and that they'll be able to either golf or go fishing or just take vacations and maybe somewhere along the way I can meet them down at Topsail and we can catch a few spots and see what's, wish you well. God bless you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add too that as Jackie said, we did battle many times up here and I can tell you with Jackie or Bob or Don, if they hadn't put their mind made up, you weren't gonna change their mind. So the next thing was to try to start doing compromise. And you didn't get very far with that either with the three of them, but we always, always remained good friends. We always were trying to do what we believe was in the best interest of the citizens. And I think this council, you know, 90% of the time we vote 7-0 because we're always trying to do what's the right thing and most of the time it's easy. Sometimes it is hard. But I do know that these gentlemen served with the utmost class and they're just really, really good, good, good people. And so we will miss them and we certainly look forward to the new ones and you have big shoes to fill.
I guess it's my turn. What am I gonna say about these guys? You know, these two guys sitting here, I've known not only as council members, but as fellow department heads. I've known them forever, it seems. And they're not just council members, they're my friends. And all of them are my friends. And I feel, I know, you'll still want to be my friends and I'm still gonna see you. So when we have issues that we need to get some deep thought, I'll be calling you guys. And personally, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss you, but I know, I know, you've spent your time, you've done your job, and you've done it well. And nobody can say that you quit, because you're not quitting. You have spent your time and this community owes you a great, great deal of gratitude for the sacrifices that you make every day. And you can only know what we go through if you sit here. And if you don't sit here, you might have an eye here, but you don't know. So I want to thank you. It's been a blast. And I'm still gonna see more of you. And Bob, I sure hope that the family, the wife, that's well, but he'll be around, we'll see them too. So enjoy the rest of God's time.
Thank you, sir.
You've earned it. We now have, anything else before we go on that? I guess it's now time to look at a new organization and swear in our new council. So at this time, we will ask the departing council members if they would wait and watch and we're going to ask Judge Tim Fining to come and do the swearing in.
Do we all go around?
The oath.
Do we all go around?
Go around there.
Me, all of us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a real honor for me to be here to swear in the mayor and the city council. I'm happy to be here. I'm also happy that Mr. Womble is sitting over there as a city attorney and I'm a judge. Though I did enjoy my time and learn a tremendous amount as a city attorney and I really appreciate that opportunity. Mayor King, you are the first individual I'm going to swear in tonight, so if I can have you, you want to come down front?
I'll come down, maybe, my wife got a broken foot, but maybe.
Why don't we step back here where she is?
We can do that.
She tells me you usually do what she tells you to do.
It's okay, Mr. Judge.
She has brought the button. All right. Mayor, put your left hand on the floor. Raise your right hand. And be after me. I, Alfonso King?
I, Alfonso King.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution?
That I will support and maintain the Constitution?
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina?
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
Mayor of the city of Goldsboro?
As mayor of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Head?
Okay. You got your balmers.
Okay. Is that your fine right there? You'll hold it with your left hand and raise your right hand. I, Michael Head?
I, Michael Head.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution?
That I will support and maintain.
And laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the laws of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina?
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Now, I know what you're thinking, the phrase in here, "and not inconsistent therewith", that is clearly written by a lawyer. I don't think Mr. Womble does. Mr. Goodman?
You and your wife would come up?
Yeah, okay.
Can I? Great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
I, William C. Goodman, Jr.
I, William C. Goodman, Jr.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina? As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Now, I know what you're thinking, the phrase in here, "and not inconsistent therewith", that is clearly written by a lawyer. I don't think Mr. Womble does. Mr. Goodman?
You and your wife would come up?
Yeah, okay.
Can I? Great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
She's gonna stand up there, we'll get all those standing aside, Mr. W.
I, William C. Goodman, Jr.
I, William C. Goodman, Jr.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina?
State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina?
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'll get it back and I'll sign that for you, sir.
Don, you act like that's for a hostage jail.
Let's see, Mr. Broadway.
I, William W. Broadway.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina?
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Bill said you're my councilman, I want to talk to you right after the meeting.
There goes your street.
If I can get Reverend Williams to come down, please.
I'd like to affirm.
Okay.
All right. As a professional.
All right, if you'd raise your right hand. I, Charles J. Williams, Sr.
I, Charles J. Williams, Sr.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina?
State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina?
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, I didn't know it was Thomas Acock.
I've been called a liar.
I, Thomas A. Acock?
I, Thomas A. Acock.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina?
As council member of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
He's been here 44 years, it takes him that to listen. New way to get a crowbar to get in there.
I think our new council is now seated and I would like to thank Judge Tim Fining for doing the honors. We greatly appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
And at this time, we will hear comments from our new council members and we'll start this end.
I didn't know I was going to have to make you comments. I guess the first thing should be no.
I guess the first thing should be no. But I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like to thank the departing council members also, I know the work that they have done, and I've talked to them several times, and I've talked to Bob Waller, and Scott, I want to thank you and your staff for the excellent briefings that you have given us. I can tell you that there's a lot of moving parts to this city, and I think I'm just now learning just how many there are, and Tim, thank you too. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's been a long time. I was first elected to the city council in 1987, November, and I served until 2004, when I stepped down. Why am I coming back? I enjoyed doing what I did, I enjoyed helping people, and I just not only served as a council member for District Three, but if someone had confidence in me and called me from another district, I was more than willing to listen and do what I could to help, but always contact their council member and let them know what was going on. I was pleasured when I was elected. The city council, the mayor plunked, and the city council had foresight to realize at that time that the City of Goldsboro was going to have to at some point go to a district system, a system of three minority districts and three white districts. So I was one of the three, J.B. Rhodes and Fred Lutz and myself were the three council members whom were elected. At that time, prior to coming on the board, it was determined that procedure-wise, the council member whom received the highest number of votes would serve as mayor pro temp. When we went to the district system in 1987, it was determined that, in all fairness to everybody, that the mayor pro temp position would rotate annually. So at least four council members on the board would have an opportunity in serving. One white council member, one black council member, another black council member, and another white council member. And I was pleasured to serve while on the council for four terms as mayor pro temp. I think while I was there, maybe Ruggen Weeden served with two or three terms.
Two.
And things worked out pretty well. At this point, and I hope I'm not out of touch, but I'd like to make a motion that we go back to that system.
There is a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion?
Mayor, I don't feel like I know enough to make a vote on that at this time. I think that there needs to be more discussion with the, I think that the ones up here right now, I'm not familiar with the issue, and I really can't make an educated vote on it. I'd like to echo the same remarks. I just want to know, understand a little more.
And further comment? Here none, and we have a motion, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
No.
Nay. Let's raise hands. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Three. All opposed? Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, then I have another motion I'd like to make, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that council member Michael Heaton B. selected as our next mayor pro temp.
We have a motion that Councilman Heaton B. select mayor pro temp?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to discuss this further. At some time other than at this meeting, it'd be my wish to table this motion.
We do have a motion, and we'll have to deal with the motion, but, okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Please raise your hands, all in favor. All opposed? Motion fails. Any further comment?
No, no further found, ma'am. Mr. Heaton? First of all, I'd like to say that I feel privileged to represent the citizens of Goldsboro, and it's an honor to be up here. I don't want to see the city as a city of color, I want to see the city as a city of Goldsboro. And, you know, I, I know it's going to be tough decisions to be made, but I hope that we'll work as a cohesive unit, and that we can get a lot accomplished for the citizens of Goldsboro, that's all citizens of Goldsboro. And I promise that when I make my decisions, that they will always be for the interest of everybody. And like I say, I look forward to serving, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We will go to a city manager's report.
Mayor and council, two items I'd like to mention. One, I'd like to thank the outgoing council members, I've enjoyed working with them for the past twelve months, and I appreciate the opportunity of all the council to serve the community, and I'd like to welcome our new members and look forward to working with you as well. The second, I hate to mention too many of the things going on in our department, but our Parks and Rec Department put a lot of people on a golf course that might not have been there previous times with a group of kids fishing. They held a fishing tournament this past Saturday, happened to take my eleven-year-old out there, and I bet we caught the same catfish twenty times, but the kids, the kids had a great time. And there might have been more parents watching than kids fishing, but we probably had fifty-plus children fishing around the golf course pond, and really was a nice morning, so I just want to thank them for those activities. And again, throughout the city, we have people doing a lot of good things for the community, and so I wanted to mention that as well, so, thank you.
District attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the outgoing members for their service, and I look forward to working with you, and that's all.
Thank you. The council and mayor's reports, I'd like for you to bear with me, I have two proclamations and three resolutions that I'd like to read. Proclamation, Twenty-Ninth Annual National Night Out, 2012. Whereas the National Association of Townwatch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug prevention program on August 7, 2012, called National Night Out. And whereas the Twenty-Ninth Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Goldsboro to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime and drug prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Goldsboro plays a vital role in assisting the Goldsboro Police Department and the Wayne County Sheriff's Department through their joint crime and drug prevention efforts in the city and county, and is supporting National Night Out 2012 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the City of Goldsboro be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and drug abuse in Goldsboro and Wayne County. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety and awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I Alfonso King, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7, 2012, as the Twenty-Ninth Annual National Night Out in the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Goldsboro to join the National Association of Townwatch in supporting the Twenty-Ninth Annual Night Out on August 7, 2012. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand to fix the seal of the City of Goldsboro the sixth day of August, 2012. I strongly encourage all of you, if you're here today, please come out tomorrow and be present, Herman Park, we start about six o'clock, I guess, whatever, but make sure you come out and show our law enforcement, all law enforcement people, that we support them. And I also urge you to do what you can to help our law enforcement personnel. They can't do it alone. We have got to work with them. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Proclamation, Purple Heart Day. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as the Badge of Military Merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. And whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington, August 7, 1782, during the Revolutionary War, as the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor of merit. And whereas on February 22, 1932, the Purple Heart was revived on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth, out of respect to his memory and his military achievements. And whereas, per United States Army Regulation, the Purple Heart is awarded in the name of the President of the United States to any member of armed forces of the United States who is wounded or killed in action against an enemy of the United States or as a result of an act of any such enemy or opposing forces. And whereas, throughout our nation's history, the men and women of the United States Armed Forces have answered the call to duty with honor, decency, and selflessness, demonstrating bravery and courage in the face of danger. And whereas in defense of freedom, many loyal and brave Americans have been killed or injured in the performance of their duties. And whereas, it is especially fitting that we set aside a day to recognize the service and sacrifice of all citizens who have been decorated with the Purple Heart. Now therefore, I Alfonso King, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, August 7, 2012, as Purple Heart Day in the City of Goldsboro in honor of those who have received the Purple Heart, and encourage citizens to support the Purple Heart banquet on August 10, 2012, where a special tribute will be given to our local Purple Heart recipients. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand to fix the seal of the City of Goldsboro the sixth day of August, 2012. There will be a banquet on the 10th of August, it will be at Walnut Creek, I hope some of you've heard of it. And we've been working with a team from Wake Forest who did this a few times, and they were so encouraged that they wanted Goldsboro since they knew that we had a very, very close relationship with our military. They wanted to share that with us, so we've been working with them, we put together this program, and so far, I think, we have about thirty-six of thirty-eight Purple Heart recipients that we're going to honor and their families. I sign individual proclamations today. I was surprised of the number of those people that I know every day, and I didn't know that they had earned a Purple Heart. So as a person who's been in combat, know what war's like, I have a special place in my heart for them, and we should all, we should all say thank you to these people. Again, it's going to be Walnut Creek, I'm sure everybody can't go because I'm told it's huge, the family will almost fill the place off. But if you can, and there are tickets available, it can be purchased at the Chamber of Commerce, among other places I know they're there, check it, and if you can, please come out and support these great people. Now shifting gears a little bit, we have three departing people, and we have resolutions now. Resolution 2012-30, commending and expressing appreciation to Charles E. Bob Waller for serving as Goldsboro City Council member for almost ten years. Whereas Charles E. Bob Waller has served this community and the City of Goldsboro well in numerous capacities, including almost ten years as a member of the City Council, representing District Two since December 2002. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly to the betterment of its economic, cultural, aesthetic development. And whereas during these years of service, Bob has gained the admiration and respect of all local officials for his untiring efforts in providing for the orderly growth of Goldsboro. And whereas during his term of office, Bob has served as a member of the Stoner Creek Alliance, the City of Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority, the Special Projects Committee, the Hystark District Commission, and the Airport Authority. And whereas many projects have been commenced and completed by the city during Bob's years of service, including construction of the new hall addition, renovation of the existing city hall, rebuilding the Paramount Theater, the Stoner Creek Park Project, base realignment enclosure efforts in 2005, overall economic development growth and downtown revitalization, including Phase One of the Center Street Escape, Center Street Escape Project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that the mayor and city council expresses to you, Charles E. Bob Waller, on behalf of themselves and other citizens and officials, appreciation and gratitude for your insouffish devotion and invaluable service and contributions rendered to this council and the City of Goldsboro in the many capacities which you have served. And be it further resolved, that we offer you our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health for your future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this sixth day of August, 2012. I have two more resolutions, and then I would like to have a motion to adopt them. Resolution 2012-31, commending and expressing appreciation to Donnie Don Chapman, Senior, for servicing as Goldsboro City Council member for eight years. Whereas Donnie R. Chapman, Junior, Senior, has served his community and the City of Goldsboro well in numerous capacities, including eight years as a member of the Goldsboro City Council, representing District Three since August 2004. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, aesthetic development. And whereas during these years of service, Don has gained the admiration and respect of all local officials for his untiring efforts in providing for the orderly growth of Goldsboro. And whereas during his term in office, Don has served as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority, the Law Enforcement Committee, the Paramount Theater Committee, the Wayne County Development Alliance, and the Downtown Development Corporation. And whereas many projects have been commenced and completed by the city during Don's years of service, including the construction of new city hall addition, renovation of this existing city hall, rebuilding the Paramount Theater, the Stoner Creek Park- existing city hall, rebuilding the Paramount Theater, the Stoner Creek Park Project, base realignment enclosure efforts of 2005, overall economic development and growth of downtown revitalization efforts, including Phase 1 of Center Street, Center Street Escape Project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and the mayor of the city council, express to you, Don R. Chapman, Sr., our best, on behalf of themselves and other citizens and officials, our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish devotion and invaluable service and contribution rendered to the council and the city of Goldsboro in the many capacities which you've served. And be it further resolved that we offer you our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in your future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this sixth day of August, 2012. A final resolution, Resolution 2012-32, resolution commending and expressing appreciation to Jackie, to Jasper Jackie Ward, for serving as Goldsboro City Councilmember for over eight years. Whereas Jasper Jackie Ward has served this community and the city of Goldsboro well in numerous capacities, including over eight years as a member of the Goldsboro City Council, representing District 6 since April 2004. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development. And whereas during these years of service, Jackie has gained the admiration and respect of all local officials for his untiring efforts in providing for the orderly growth of Goldsboro. And whereas during his terms in office, Jackie has served as member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Public Works, Wayne's Bar Park Community Building and Recreation Center Special Committees. And whereas many projects have been commenced and completed by the city during Jackie's years of service, including construction of the new city hall addition, renovation of the existing city hall, rebuilding the Paramount Theater, the Stoner Creek Park Project, base realignment closure efforts 2005, overall economic development growth and downtown revitalization efforts, including Phase 1 of the Center Street Escape Project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that the mayor and city council express to you, Jackie, Jasper Jackie Ward, on behalf of themselves and other citizens and officials, our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish devotion and invaluable service and contributions rendered to the city and the city of Goldsboro in the many capacities in which you've served. And be it further resolved that we offer you our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in your future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this sixth day of August, 2012. I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we adopt the three resolutions of the three outgoing council members that you just read.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known with, is there a question? No question. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with aye.
Aye.
Pose aye. Motion's carried. And I hope those three guys are here because we have some copies of these resolutions here. They didn't leave Jackie and Don here. Get up, come up, guys. And Chef, would you come up for, please, or we'll get it too, we'll get it. I want to take, oh, yes, I am. I changed my mind. I think that the citizens need to see these, these resolutions, right? And they could keep these forever, and this one is Don. They have to. Jackie? Again. Thank you so much. You're gonna miss it. I don't worry about this. Thank you so much. Jackie, you brought the box? Yeah. Where are we? Mr. Mayor, please.
You want me to go? All right, I do have three comments, Mr. Mayor, and they're all very good, I hope. The first was, in Friday's paper we read where the schools had gotten, moved up from seventy-five percent to eighty percent graduation, and that more than half of the thirty-one schools were doing above average or above what they were called for, which I think a lot of people have a lot of conversations in this community about schools. There's a lot of people working on schools, but anything positive is good. We need to recognize that. And the one thing I would say to you is, I would encourage anybody listening, anybody here, to pick a school, pick a kid, and mentor a kid. It would make all the difference in that kid's life and your life. I promise you, it's a good thing. So that's one thing I just want to touch on. Second thing is Friday, the urging of Scott and Scott, I went to the senior center groundbreaking because, or renovation, I guess, because the mayor was out of town that day, and I couldn't believe what I saw. They took Neil's old office there between the parks, Harmony Parks and the library, and months ago, I thought the thing should have been tore down. And they completely redid it. They did it on their own. It's unbelievable, and they did a great job, and Stacia Fields was kind of in charge, and they love her. My goodness, I've never seen one employee that somebody loves so much.
They should.
Didn't realize she had been here so long, and they gave her something for being here twenty-five years. But what a great thing, and I got to thinking, sitting here, now Jackie and Bob will have a place to go play canasta. So that's a good thing. So that is, that's a great thing. And then the third thing I would just touch on is, we always hear a lot of complaints. Is Chief still, we're still here? We always hear a lot of complaints about the 911 Center and about our police response time. Well, as a fluke, Saturday, I was riding down Ash Street headed towards downtown, and a vehicle came past me flying, and if you're passing me, you're moving pretty good. But he was flying. He ran through two stoplights. I'm like, this guy's gonna kill somebody. So I just picked up the phone, called 911. I told him about the vehicle. He was fixing to turn on William Street. I said, he's turning on William Street. And so I said, I'm saying, I'm gonna follow and just see. And I was pretty far behind him, but I said, I'm just gonna see if they come or don't come. And I promise y'all, I turned on William Street, I passed the post office, I see a police car come out, and they had him about, I mean, and this is seconds, this isn't even minutes, this is seconds. So Chief, I want to commend the 911 Center and your folks. I mean, I couldn't have been any more impressed. They did a great job. Don't know what happened with the situation, but I just know they were, the response was unbelievable. So I do want to commend them for that. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to offer again my congratulations to my three outgoing council members. You guys really would be greatly missed, and I enjoyed so much working with all three of you, and I consider you very, very dear friends. Secondly, I just want to say thank you to my lovely wife and my stepson, stepdaughter-in-law, my two wonderful grandsons for being here tonight. That's been a lot to me. And again, I just want to thank the citizens of District 1 for allowing me to serve another term for our great city. Thank you.
Seconds, if you'd like to say something?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm looking very forward to serving the people of Goldsboro and the people of District 2, and I'm very honored to be serving this city. And I promise you, I will do my very best. Thank you.
Neil?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to extend my appreciation to my wife and my family for their support in this election. And a special thanks to Ernest Lofton, who worked very hard in my campaign, and my other campaign people whom supported me and worked hard to get me back in office. And it means so much. I hate to see Jackie leave and Don leave. I never served with Don, but Don worked, was Planning Director when I was here before, and did an outstanding job, very knowledgeable of the planning department. Jackie, Jackie and I go back a long way to law enforcement, and then Jackie came and served on the city council, and I enjoyed working with him then. And Bob Waller came on around the same time that Jackie did, and I enjoyed working with Bob Waller. We all got along well, and I'm sure these three people would be missed. And thank you for your work, your hard work, and your dedication. Thank you.
Charles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to say to Bob and Jackie and Don that your services to the city of Goldsboro have been invaluable, and I've enjoyed working with each of you, and we're certainly gonna miss you. And I do pray that you and your families will have many more years together to, you won't have the headaches of this work up here. I want to thank my wife of fifty-one years. She and I have been married. We got married when we were eighteen. And I want to thank my son, he's here, and also my sister-in-law, they all worked on my campaign, and they worked diligently in my, this is my fifth term. I've been on the council for seventeen years come November, and it's been a delightful experience for me, you know. I thank God for the good and for the not-so-good. And I started working on the Mayor Hal Plunk, and of course, our mayor, he worked on the late Mayor Hal Plunk, and I want to say that I think we have a mayor who is second to none, and Mayor King. I look forward to the new council members that are coming on, and I hope that we'll have the same kind of teamwork and unity that we had on the outgoing council. And there are many things that we have on the table for the city of Goldsboro. I won't start naming all of them, but I'm really pro-Goldsboro, and, you know, Wayne County and everything else, but Goldsboro is my main concern. And I really want to thank my constituents in District 4, they have been, you know, re-elected me for each term. This is the fifth term. I thank you so much, and I promise you that I will continue to give it my very best. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Mr. Mayor, Goldsboro's always been my home. I'm proud of it. It's a great city. It's got a lot of improvements to be made, and I think the council can make them. You know, I want to thank everybody who helped me get elected, and I want to thank Fran Casey. Fran, you got my number, you can always call me, I'll always receive it.
I got your number.
I've known, excuse me, I've known Bob Waller for a long time. I've only gotten to know Jackie and Sheila over the last seven months. And Don, I've known him from watching it on cable TV when he was Planning Director and always thought he did a tremendous job, and I know he's done a tremendous job as a city councilman. Spent twelve years in Goldsboro High School, teaching Goldsboro High School. Loved those twelve years. I met my wife there. We've been married not anywhere near as long as you, wherever we live. But I do want to say that I hope I can do the best I can for the people that elected me, but most of all, I want to do a lot for the youth of the city of Goldsboro, because I'd like to see Goldsboro continue to strive, and I don't think we can strive without our youth. And we'll do what we can, you know, like I say, I'm only one, but I'll do whatever I can, and I'd always try to do the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say a few things, and to begin with, let me say this. Tonight's agenda, we deliberately left items off the agenda that would require new council members' vote, for the reason being, they weren't familiar with them. So one reason I voted against that, when two of our new council members objected because they weren't familiar with it, I understand that, and I think you should be given more time to understand where we are and what we're doing. So after you get your feet on the ground and whatever you guys want, is what we'll do. That's the way it works around here. I want to thank my wife, who's hopping here tonight. She broke her, she broke her foot or her toe. She didn't have a tooth problem, Doc, she had a toe problem. But she's here, and Charles, we're right behind you, man. Don't slow down. Forty-nine and a half years.
Forty-nine and a half.
Forty-nine and a half years. Now, don't you all agree that I deserve a medal? I do. Thank you. You're right about that, she does.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want them to think I'm all that old. We got married when we were eighteen.
Wow, understand, that's, you're not old. But I too want to thank the people who supported me, and I'll tell you, they're all over the city, and I've known them for, well, I've been associated with the city for thirty, over thirty years. So I knew them when I was Department Head, and they've supported me all the way through. I couldn't ask for a better support. But most importantly, the staff that we have here in this great city, I can tell you that I would not have run for reelection, not even the second time, had it not been for the staff and the people who surround me. I feel it a privilege to come to work every day and see the smiling faces of these very talented, dedicated, ambitious people who want nothing but to make this city the best that it can be. That's all they want. It's a tough job, and my job is to give a little advice and encouragement all the time, but then I know to get out of their way, and they will make it happen. So what happens in this city is not about this group. Of course, we make the policies, we make the decisions, but the rubber meets the road. And our city manager, our Assistant City Manager, our Department Heads, our employees, I'll put them against any in this state anytime. And I feel now that we have a council. We're gonna have differences. That's the way it is, that's the way it should be, but I only say, let's put them on the table. Don't argue about it, mumble about it, whip them under the table. Let's put them on the table and talk about them, and then vote. If four people vote for it or against it, that's it. So I look forward to that with all of you. And welcome aboard. It will be frustrating, it will be challenging, but you'll love it. You will, when it's all over. So, having gone through all of this, this meeting stands adjourned.